Hi, Pam Ireland, eight twenty Fudders Point Lane. I'm here as president of the Harbor Watch Homeowners Association just to give my thoughts on matters that I know are legal and that you'd be discussing in executive session. I was present at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting where Mr. Horton's setback variance was denied, and I was at the meeting where Mr. Reeves' setback variance were granted. Both matters involved the marsh that abuts our neighborhood, Harbor Watch, but that's where the similarities end for these two matters. The board made solid, well-founded, and detailed findings in both cases and came to different results because in one case, all four required criteria under our code for the variance were met, and in the other case, they were not met. No precedent is set by either one. As you know, every variance request involves different property with different circumstances and must be decided on its own merits. When the four criteria required under our code are not sufficiently proven, the board denies the variance; when they're sufficiently proven, they grant it. We support both decisions made by the board for the reasons articulated by Mr. Barrow in his motions and reflected on the record. Obviously, getting a variance is just one step in the building process. Obtaining necessary permits is a separate and equally critical process. That is no slam dunk just because a variance has been granted, nor should it be. Each plan has to be carefully scrutinized by appropriate planning department staff considering the specific conditions of the property and its location before any building, stormwater, or tree removal permits should be issued. That's a process separate and apart from the variance. Just because variance is granted doesn't mean that the plans that are submitted are appropriate and that should be permitted. I hope my thoughts will be considered as you discuss these matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Anyone for public comment? All right, seeing no one, public comment is closed. Item number three is executive session, and please bear with me as I read all of this. It would be for legal and contractual items. Number one is legal advice related to water service to the town and Mount Pleasant Fire and Police Training Facility. Number two, legal advice related to threatened and pending litigation involving properties adjacent to marshlands, including pending litigation captioned William Nathaniel Horton versus Town and Mount Pleasant Board of Zoning Appeals. Section B is personnel: annual performance evaluation of the town administrator; two, annual performance evaluation of corporation council; three, consideration of applications to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals; four, consideration of applications to serve on the construction board of adjustments; five, consideration of applications to serve on the historical commission; six, consideration of applications to serve on the historic district preservation commission; seven, consideration of applications to serve on the planning commission. Is there a motion that we go into executive session for the reasons published and stated?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Before we vote, we plan to reconvene at five thirty, and you can see why after I read that. And upon reconvening, council may take action on any item, including any subsection of any section listed on an executive session agenda or discussed in executive session during a properly noticed meeting. All in favor of the motion to go into executive session for the reasons published, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session, and we will reconvene at five thirty.
We have been in executive session in our special council meeting that we began at four thirty. In case you're wondering why this, this movie began right in the middle. And that's where we have been and no votes were cast, no action was taken. However, we do have some motions to come out of the information and deliberations that we had. So I'll start with Mrs. Whitley.
I'd like to make a motion to approve legal action related to fire and police training facility as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, next please. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, next.
Okay, motion to approve the contract as presented in executive session for the town administrator.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All right, motion carries, next please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Stephen Wood to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And to appoint Joan Spire for the position of, in position number seven.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the two nominees, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next please.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint for the construction board of adjustments in seats one, two, and three. And Derbyshire and East Blackwell and Teresa Martinez. And for seat number five, I'd like to, uh, let's see, a motion to nominate Taylor Porter.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, is there any discussion on the construction board of adjustments? All in favor of the nominees as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, motion carries, next please.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint for seats five, six, and seven for the historical commission. Jan and German, uh, German, William Hine and Danielle Cox.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, next please.
I'd like to make a motion for, to appoint, um, to the planning commission, uh, Kevin Berry for seat number four. And to reappoint Pamela Ireland for seat number five.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. That concludes, uh, section, uh, three, A and B. And that was, uh, section four, which was, uh, post-executive session, which we have done in accordance with the notice that was published. Section five is National Tennis Month proclamation, would you, uh, would the council member please come forward?
Today, um, we're going to have a proclamation for National Tennis Month. I have with me here, Mr. Bill Ennis. Whereas the United States Tennis Association and the Town of Mount Pleasant Tennis Clubs promote the play and growth of the sport of tennis in South Carolina. At every age, ability, and level of play from beginners to professionals. And whereas playing tennis at any ability and level improves heart health, agility, and can provide a positive and fun environment to spend time with family and friends while staying active. And whereas by increasing accessibility of tennis for Mount Pleasant residents of all ages and ability. The USTA and the Town of Mount Pleasant have helped make our community healthier. And whereas the USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month. To encourage players, organizations, facilities, retailers, tennis manufacturers, and many other tennis providers to promote local programs and activities at public parks and facilities. Private clubs, schools, colleges, and universities to showcase tennis and spread the word about the sport and its benefits. And to help players and non-players alike find courts and play opportunities in their communities. Now therefore, our mayor, Will Haney, and the Town of Mount Pleasant do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-five National Tennis Month. In the Town of Mount Pleasant and encourage all of our residents from youth to senior to stay active and play tennis.
Just briefly, uh, thank you Laura, uh, thank you Mr. Mayor. Uh, the council for your years of support and dedication to the sport of tennis. Uh, we deeply appreciate our recent unique, uh, public-private project, uh, which the USTA and the LCTA, uh, donated thirty-five thousand dollars to help refinish the courts. Which is a massive show of support of safety and protection and healthiness for the citizens of Mount Pleasant, especially the ones that play tennis. Um, and I want to give a short shout-out to TJ, uh, to Matt and Haley. I work with a lot of municipalities, uh, up in and around the state, they are literally the best at what they do. And so if you look in front of you, we would ask you to please enjoy the tennis balls that we've given you that are right there in front of you. We've got those right before the tariff, so we got a great deal on them. And so, uh, for other people who are in the room, we have tennis balls for everybody, for almost everybody outside on your way out. Uh, so please take care of those, uh, on your way out, and again, we appreciate everything that you do for us, thank you.
Let me ask, what does a can of tennis balls cost these days?
Before or after the tariff? Uh, that, that's, that's about, um, three dollars, three or four dollars at Walmart.
Great, we do not have to report this.
No, he does.
Closure.
I made sure of that, nobody's in trouble. Maybe in a month it's over, no, no.
Should we not be popping this like?
We have been in executive session in our special council meeting that we began at four thirty. In case you're wondering why this, this movie began right in the middle. And that's where we have been and no votes were cast, no action was taken. However, we do have some motions to come out of the information and deliberations that we had. So I'll start with Mrs. Whitley.
I'd like to make a motion to approve legal action related to fire and police training facility as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, next please.
Is that me?
I would go ahead, yes.
Sorry, skip one. Motion to approve the contract as presented in executive session for the town administrator.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, next.
Okay, motion to approve the contract as presented in executive session for the corporation council.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, next please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Stephen Wood to the Board of Zoning Appeals and to appoint Joan Spire for the position of, in position number seven.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the two nominees, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next please.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint for the construction board of adjustments in seats one, two, and three, and Derbyshire and East Blackwell, and Teresa Martinez. And for seat number five, I'd like to, let's see, a motion to nominate Taylor Porter.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, is there any discussion on the construction board of adjustments? All in favor of the nominees as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, motion carries, next please.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint for seats five, six, and seven for the historical commission, Janine German, William Hine, and Danielle Cox.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, next please.
I'd like to make a motion for, to appoint to the planning commission Kevin Berry for seat number four and to reappoint Pamela Ireland for seat number five.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. That concludes section three, A and B, and that was section four, which was post-executive session, which we have done in accordance with the notice that was published. Section five is National Tennis Month proclamation. Would you, would the council member please come forward?
Good seat.
Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Good evening. Let me call to order the May 13th meeting of Mount Pleasant Town Council. It's good to see everyone here today. Not sure what happened when we were in executive session, but it got dark and it got warm. And now the power's back on, and I understand some folks who are on their way here are delayed because of something related to that power outage. But our agenda has been published, and we will begin with item one, which is a prayer by Chaplain Gibbs, followed by the pledge led by Mayor Pro Tem Whitley, so if you would please rise.
May I invite you to pray with me? Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, for this is the day you have me. We ask that you bless this town of Mount Pleasant. We ask that you bless the mayor. We ask that you bless every elected official. We ask that you bless everyone that's represented here. We ask that you bless this meeting, give them peace, wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Go for approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved. Item four is public hearings, awards, and presentations, and we may, and we're allowed by law on things like that that are not things we vote on to do things, to change the order. And since we're waiting on one of the honorees, we may have to move one of those out of order. But we will begin with the Teacher of the Year Presentations. Mr. Brownstein.
Thank you very much. As the chairman of the Town's Education Committee, this is truly a highlight of the year for me, and that is when we recognize all of our CCSD East of the Cooper Teachers of the Year. I think that everybody in this room has had a special teacher in their life who is largely responsible for where they are now, and so it's just a very big honor to bring in these hardworking individuals. Everybody knows that teachers really don't stop teaching when the school bell rings. There's a lot of work that they put in after hours, and it's truly a labor of love for these individuals. Tonight, I'm pleased to be joined by Deputy Superintendent Dr. Lucas Clamp, but I'd like to bring him up and have him say a few words as well, and then we'll get on to the honoring of the teachers.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and staff. Thank you so much for celebrating with us education. The teachers that are going to get honored tonight are the best of Charleston County and certainly the best of Mount Pleasant. And it is a teacher in every classroom that truly makes the difference in our students' lives, and we want to say thank you to the partnership of the town and the partnership that the families and the community provide to help create conditions for students in Charleston County to thrive, and we are thriving. And on behalf of our superintendent, Ms. Huggins, she sends her best tonight both to the council and to the Teachers of the Year. She's celebrating with her son tonight, who's a senior at Lucy Beckham, getting some honor and honored time tonight. I also want to thank some of the principals are here tonight. There's a few over in the crowd here celebrating with their teachers. Leadership matters in Charleston County School District, and those conditions that we referenced are certainly done so because we've got exceptional leadership. So again, thank you for honoring our teachers tonight. Thank you for celebrating public education, and to the Teachers of the Year, the best is yet to come. So thank you again.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite up the rest of the Education Committee, Councilman John Icafano and Councilwoman G.M. Whitley. All right, and let's get to the main event that is honoring these special teachers. We're going to start with Carolina Park Elementary School and Brandy Summer. From James B. Edwards Elementary, Sarah Swett. From Jenny Moore Elementary, Rachel Conroy. Laurel Hill Primary School, Angela Good. This is a personal favorite of mine from Whitesides Elementary, Jennifer Goodall. From Mount Pleasant Academy, we have Helen Webster. Sullivan's Island Elementary, Laura Castle. Lang Middle School, tough age to teach, Alyssa Chicarella. East Cooper Montessori School, we have Jordan Bates. And I'm so proud of this last one. We actually have the district's Teacher of the Year, driving a new car, I presume, from Thomas Carrillo Middle School, Katie Schaefer. And I just want to thank everybody in our community. I think the reason that we have such good schools here is from the involvement of the town, of its residents, and definitely the result of these hardworking teachers. We all need to thank them not only this one time a year, but make sure to thank them throughout the year and make sure that Mount Pleasant is a place where they can live and work. So thank you to the teachers here. We really appreciate you, and I guess you're probably looking forward to summer break. I am too. I know my kids are too, but thank you so much for everything that you do. You definitely mean a lot more to us than the contents in that bag, and we would give you all new cars if we could.
Good to see you. Item B, under Public Hearings, Awards, and Presentations, is longevity awards. So to our staff, I think our recreation director is going to come make a presentation.
Mayor, members of council, I'm honored to be standing in front of you tonight to honor a longtime employee for the Town of Mount Pleasant Recreation Department, and I'm very happy to do that tonight. Before I do that, I just want to make mention that I am now the fourth recreation director that this young lady has served under, and it says a lot to me, I think, and it should say a lot to you, that the three previous recreation directors that she worked for are also here, Mr. Ken Ayew, Mr. Ted Summerford, and Mr. Steve Burkitt. So I think that shows a lot how much this young lady has done for the Town of Mount Pleasant as well as Recreation Department. Ann is a program specialist for our department who successfully plans, organizes, and facilitates over 100 different programs and camps each year. These programs allow individuals of all ages to explore many different aspects, including arts, dance, athletics, and education. Her ability to create unique and meaningful recreation opportunities for this community has made a positive impact on countless individuals and families in our town. If a child has ever participated in a camp or program in Mount Pleasant, it's almost certain that Ann has been part in providing that positive experience. Ann not only works tirelessly on her day-to-day responsibilities, but she also finds time to attend conferences and seminars to grow as a professional. Since 2001, Ann has been an active member of the South Carolina Parks and Recreation Association. She has served on various committees and boards and has provided guidance and advice to fellow recreation professionals across the state to further grow the recreation industry. Jim Hedley, the executive director of SCRPA, said, "Ann is a true professional and is always willing to step up and help our profession grow and succeed." When you ask coworkers to describe Ann, they use words like amazing, innovative, hardworking, passionate, and a true team player. Her passion to help others is evident each and every day in the rec department, and we are lucky to have Ann as part of our team. Please join me in congratulating Ann Selman for her 25 years of service to the Town of Mount Pleasant. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. So next, I will be making a proclamation honoring Rear Admiral Jim Flatley, a Mount Pleasant resident and personal friend. I will come around there and ask the Flatley family to meet me right there, please. All right. Whereas Rear Admiral James Henry Flatley III was born on January 9th, 1934 in San Diego, California, he is a 1956 graduate of the United States Naval Academy and later received his MBA from Auburn University. And whereas during Admiral Flatley's career, he commanded at every level. He was a Navy test pilot, flew 347 combat missions in Vietnam, and was commander of the aircraft carrier Saratoga. 21 of his 1,608 carrier landings were accomplished in the C-130 Hercules, which you can also see on YouTube if you just put that in there. Whereas after 31 years of naval service, Admiral Flatley retired, but continued serving his community, which included seven years as the CEO of Patriots Point Development Authority, Executive Director of Patriots Point Naval and Maritime Museum, where he contributed to rebuilding it into a premier naval air museum, 24 years as a Roper St. Francis Healthcare Trustee, and a National Medal of Honor Center for Leadership Board Member. And whereas Admiral Flatley's recognitions during his naval career include the Distinguished Service Medal, Silver Star, Legion of Merit five awards, Distinguished Flying Cross three awards, the Bronze Star, the Air Medal 30 awards, and the Presidential Unit Citation two awards. And whereas after the events of 9/11, Admiral Flatley worked closely with the General Assembly of South Carolina to ensure passage of an act in 2003 to reestablish the South Carolina Naval Militia, appoint the members of the commission, and rapidly organize the militia. The legislation stipulated the naval militia would be directly subordinate to the governor under the administrative control of the South Carolina Maritime Security Commission, to which Admiral Flatley was appointed as chairman. And whereas Admiral Flatley has been married to his wife Nancy for over 60 years, together they have six children, 24 grandchildren, and many of whom are following the family's Navy tradition. Now therefore, I, Will Haney, Mayor of Town of Mount Pleasant in the great state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim, I did this in April, April 17th, 2025, as Rear Admiral James H. Flatley III day throughout the Town of Mount Pleasant, and encourage all residents to visit the USS Yorktown and the Patriots Point Naval and Maritime Museum to learn more about Rear Admiral Flatley's career and contributions to his community. Signed, Will Haney, Mayor. And what an honor, what an honor.
Thank you for the warm welcome and the recognition. It was a pretty natural thing to flow right into Saratoga and pick up the pieces and keep her running and looking smart. But it was more of a pleasure to do that for Town of Mount Pleasant, which Nancy and I have enjoyed and enjoyed and enjoyed. And the kids have come and gone, and we're just living in a wonderful place run by wonderful people. Thank you.
Thank you. Get a picture? Thank you very much. Thank you. God bless you too. Thank you. Appreciate it. If the fire marshal says we have to evacuate, we will have to evacuate. I do hear the alarm going off. Until such word, let's move on with item 4D, Jewish American Heritage Month proclamation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate you giving me the honor of presenting this proclamation tonight. I wish that my grandparents Herb and Sylvia were here to see it because they would be immensely proud. At this point, I'd like to invite up the Charleston Jewish Federation, please. Whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is celebrated annually in May to honor generations of Jewish Americans who have contributed to the history and culture of our nation. And whereas Jewish Americans have been an integral part of the Low Countries vibrant history with the first Jewish settlers arriving in the 1690s and establishing a lasting presence that continues to enrich the city today. And whereas Kahal Kadash Beth Elahid, founded in 1749 in Charleston, is the historic birthplace of Reform Judaism in the United States. And whereas Jewish Americans have made significant contributions to Mount Pleasant's economic And whereas Jewish Americans have made significant contributions to Mount Pleasant's economic development through entrepreneurship, business leadership, and innovation, playing a key role in building a thriving local economy. And whereas the Jewish community has enriched Mount Pleasant's arts and culture, supporting institutions, artists, and events that celebrate creativity and foster cross-cultural appreciation. And whereas Jewish Americans from Mount Pleasant have honorably served in the United States military, demonstrating courage, patriotism, and a commitment to protecting the freedoms we hold dear. And whereas Jewish physicians, researchers, and healthcare professionals have made critical contributions to medicine and healthcare in Mount Pleasant, improving lives and advancing the well-being of the entire community. And whereas the Jewish community in Mount Pleasant has established cultural institutions, synagogues, and organizations that have enriched the city's religious, social, and cultural fabric, while educating and serving the public, fostering dialogue and mutual understanding among groups, and promoting a welcoming, inclusive community for all residents. And whereas recognizing and celebrating Jewish American Heritage Month reaffirms our town's commitment to combating prejudice, standing against antisemitism and all forms of hate, and promoting unity among all of Mount Pleasant's residents. Now therefore I, Will Haney, Mayor of the Town of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the Town of Mount Pleasant, and encourage all residents to join in celebrating the achievements, contributions, and enduring legacy of Jewish Americans, both in our local community and throughout the nation. And Mayor Haney, I'd like you to come up for the photo as well.
Thank you so much for the recognition. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, before we vote on item five, I will be abstaining on the minutes since I was not here for the April meeting. Item number five on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 2025 Town Council Meeting and the March 2025 Financial Statement.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? Since I was absent that month, I will abstain from voting on this. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item six is public comment. Before we get to public comment, I would like to, there have been some developments, some things have been withdrawn or will be deferred. So if you're here to talk on those, we thought you ought to know there are some of these that will not be voted on tonight, and you might want to come back at a different time, use your time and energy for that. You're welcome to stay and speak on that if you want, but if it's not going to be voted on tonight, we thought you ought to note. So Mr. Paglenini, if you'll update us on that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the benefit of our public under item 9A, which is planning new business. Item number three, which is watermark plan development on Bowman Road, that has been removed at staff request based on additional work that needs to be performed. I will note that the applicant also requested a deferral, but from an official standpoint, that is a staff removal. Also number five, which is Dunes West Plan Development District Ordinance, that has been withdrawn by the applicant. So numbers three and five will not be addressed by council, will not be voted on tonight. For the benefit of council, items four and six have been requested by the applicant by deferral, but that is a council decision, and those will be addressed.
Okay. Thank you very much. So that having been said, when Mr. Demora calls your name, please come forward, and please give name and address, and by ordinance, two and a half minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First Speaker, Sean Barnes.
Yes, the clerk, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Sean Barnes. I live at 1418 Barber Street. I've been a resident here, grew up here almost my whole life, grew up on the island and made the long journey to Mount Pleasant, keep my business here. We do everything here. In my house over there, I raised a son and a daughter, and there's just been some troubling things going on. I sent y'all an email earlier today telling you what was going on, and then I've just given you some if you had not had a chance to look at that. You know, my wife just passed away January 2nd, and the last thing I want to do is be up here trying to get involved in this, but I couldn't just let it lie, right? It is happening to me, but I've talked to men that have been in this area for a lot longer in their houses, in the same areas, and they look like they're about ready to cry. What's going on with this building is out of control. We don't have the infrastructure to do this. It wasn't meant to be like that. I thought it was just Indian Village, but I've talked to so many people, it's all the neighborhoods in Mount Pleasant. You know, we need to bring back some sensible stuff, like the height on the attached buildings that they had in the old village, right? Historical area. You know, another thing that I saw that they had that I brought up would be number two. You know, they look at what's around them before they allow something to be built, right? They want to look at the neighborhood and what fits in with this. And then also, you've got the, what is it? The engineered soil. I've been asking for a while, how does that compute, right? I mean, I know y'all are saying it's pervious, and so they're digging out the whole area, and they're putting in all this dirt, and we don't know where it's from. You know, you read it. Are we requesting to make sure that this stuff isn't, you know, they got it from somewhere they shouldn't have, and it's getting into our water table and it's hurting our kids? I mean, it's just so much. And I apologize, I'm trying to read through this, but what I'm going to tell you is, this town is tired. And it's not just us in the Indian Village, it's the people that's been here. You're trying to get money, taxes, I understand, but what you're doing is you're hurting us who have helped build this town, right? So I wish you'd really look at what you have tonight, and please do something, or either put something on hold, just don't push this around like you've done everything else. Not everything, but you know what I'm saying. Show us some compassion, please. Thank you.
Pam, we cannot allow outbursts, because if we applaud, we also have to allow boos, and we don't want that. So I'm sorry, but that's always been the rule in chambers. Pam Ireland?
Hi again, and thanks for reappointing me to the commission. I'm here to talk about settlement communities.
We need name and address.
Oh, sorry, Pam Ireland, 820 Fiddler's Point Lane. When I worked on the comprehensive plan draft back in 2000...
Just get closer to it. That's all.
When I worked on the comprehensive plan draft back in 2019, I became familiar with issues facing settlement communities where the properties are physically located in Mount Pleasant but legally still part of the county. There are numerous differences between the county ordinances that govern these properties now and the towns ordinances that would govern them if they annexed in. We want these properties annexed into the town, but because our code is more restrictive and inconsistent with the historic character of these communities, it acts as a disincentive to the generational property owners. Getting water and sewer service to these communities is a huge plus for everyone. Annexation would provide that, but annexation too often comes with significant loss of community character. Yet if annexation is requested but denied, the property's entitled to water and sewer while it's still remaining in the county. So I think the key to avoid this catch-22 is to allow annexation but have an appropriate historical overlay for each of the communities to preserve its unique character. The COM Plan deems it a high priority action item to work to alleviate our code disconnects and to make annexation a positive, not a negative, for settlement community residents. We took the first step, which was to make a default rezoning designation that more matches the counties, but that's just one step in a much larger process. Developers are targeting these properties more and more as fewer development opportunities exist here. Before these communities lose more ground, I urge you to place a moratorium on subdivisions for all settlement community parcels still within the county, especially for those that have historical overlays on them through the county, but I would say all of them, not just those, and promptly establish a team to work with not only settlement community leaders but county staff to provide the necessary protection for these properties, which are falling by the wayside to development at an alarming rate. This is an urgent need, and it will result in a win-win for both the town and the community residents. Thank you.
James McKee?
James McKee, 1247 Palmetto Peninsula Drive. I'd like to encourage you to push forward on the tree task force. I compliment you on taking a step in passing a stronger tree ordinance this year. We live, my wife and I live in Seaside Farms, and we, in the HOA, passed a much stronger tree policy this year, which, as you recognize, causes some controversy when you do that. There are a lot of complex issues around protecting the trees and rights of private property that come up in development, and I think the benefit of a tree task force is to assemble the representatives of people from different constituents that can help you as a council go through their additional decisions that you need to make to kind of carry forward with your Community Forest Master Plan, which I think is a wonderful visionary document, right? But some action is required, and I think I would encourage you to work with us as homeowners associations in how do we restore the tree canopy, and I think that task force can help bring through some of those ideas and incentives. So thank you for considering that and encourage you to take a positive step forward in it.
Kathy McKee?
Hi, good evening. I am Kathy McKee, and I too reside at 1247 Palmetto Peninsula. I'm here with a different issue, though. I'm here tonight regarding the proposal to amend the Seaside Farms PD to allow for another hotel, and hope the council denies this request tonight and not simply defer it, as I think is on the request. According to the town zoning ordinance, the purpose of a plan development is to promote the most appropriate use of the land, improve the character and quality of new development, and encourage open space. Is a second hotel in Seaside Farms the most appropriate use of the property? I would argue it is not. There is no benefit of another hotel to the community. Only outsiders, tourists, benefit from a hotel, and we already have one in Seaside Farms. A new hotel would also add traffic congestion and overcrowded parking for local residents. Will a second hotel improve the character and quality of Seaside Farms? The answer again is no. I'm not against development of the property. We have welcomed other new businesses that improved our neighborhood. For example, Gilligan's, which was another restaurant property, was replaced with a childcare facility that improves life for young working families. A hotel offers no improvements to the character or quality of Seaside Farms. Will a hotel add or improve open space? No, just the opposite. A new hotel is likely to increase the size of the developed property and damage or remove the beautiful canopy of trees that are currently surrounding that restaurant. This application was submitted because the Yamada owners hadn't had any good prospects after a year or two on the market, this from them. But when they changed their sales listing to hotel, they received many inquiries. So here we are. It may take a while for the perfect business to purchase the property, one that benefits Seaside Farms and the town, not non-residents. I think we can wait for it. We don't need another hotel. And a friend of mine, who is sitting before me, said to me, "My theory is always, ask the customer what they want." I think the customer wants this denied for the town. Thank you.
Mary Hope Green?
My name is Mary Hope Green. I live at 142 Rose Lane in Mount Pleasant, and I wanted to speak about a couple of things real quick. I totally agree with everything that Sean has said. Rose Lane, my tiny little street, it runs between Simmons and Wildon by the library. We are getting hammered by not only development surrounding us that's very concerning, but also the traffic, and we need speed bumps, that's one thing. But I also agree with everything Sean said. I really think the town needs to somehow, I don't know, get a working group with current residents that have been here, but to protect the people that have been here, because I've noticed more and more field dirt coming in, you've got an older home, and they're getting flooded. It's happened on Rose Lane when the church was rebuilt, to the point that the church built Ms. Green's family a new house there. On another point, settlement communities. I retired from 28 years working with the Corps of Engineers in the Regulatory Division with wetland permitting and developers, worked with, we tried to get the developers to do things the right way. We had a lot more leeway at that time with NEPA that we could consider more things than maybe the town staff can consider in their reviews. But I would like to point out, as I'm sure you know, the settlement communities are in the Gulligichi Heritage Corridor that was established by Congress and the National Park Service. And we all see the infringement of the developers coming in, we understand why it's a popular area, people want to move here, but once these communities are gone, they're gone. We can't get them back. And they're not only just a community somewhere down the road, these are people's homes and their neighborhoods. I've seen that on Rose Lane, when some of my elderly neighbors have been forced out of their homes by developers coming in or being under sad circumstances and losing their homes due to poverty, and it's sad and it's wrong. And I think the town really needs to, at the very least, work with Charleston County and the residents of the settlement communities to add some layers of protection there, to keep the developers from coming in and taking over these neighborhoods, and then it's going to be like everywhere else, where the African-American communities are pushed out and moved to West Ashley, North Charleston, somewhere else. I love the diversity on Rose Lane. When my son was little, when we moved there, we've been there about 10 years, and all the elderly ladies that have been there, they looked out for us, they're my friends, their families are my friends, and I hate to see these communities get forced out and broken up by developers.
Thank you. Jeremy Manchester?
Hello? Jeremy Manchester, 3133 Pigntelli Crescent, Dunes West. I'm going to give you the flip side of the settlement communities. I own seven properties here in Mount Pleasant, never thought I would even need to be here, but I've got five properties that I asked to be annexed in, and it kept getting deferred, deferred the last two meetings because it was in a settlement community. I don't know, like, out of the nine of you guys here, has anybody been to a county historic preservation, you know, commission meeting? Out of the nine of you, anybody ever been there? No? I'm...
We're not allowed to interact.
Okay, okay. Sorry. Sorry, I didn't know. But I'm only here not because I'm trying to flip 12 acres that I've owned for the last few years and been going to for the last eight years into like some crazy development. I'm here because not only, you know, do I vote in Mount Pleasant, pay taxes in Mount Pleasant, just redid my business license for 8,000 bucks April 29th and have 6,000 customers here. I plan on being in Mount Pleasant for a long time. In fact, three of the teachers that were up here, I know are my customers. But I'm here kind of be, and I make good money, but I'm scared. You might not think it, but just February 19th, 2025, directly from the meeting minutes, a guy in the 10 Mile community just wanted to build a house and a pool, and I got three people on there that denied him getting a pool, did not want him to get a pool. And then I've got, literally, this isn't like about protecting, a lot of these meetings isn't about protecting the local community, it's about power. So the director's remarks just in February was like, hey, if you don't want pools in 10 Mile, just write it in and we won't do pools. Well, I've got a couple million dollars in 10 Mile. I plan on keeping it. I've got three boys, six, eight, and 10. They go to, you know, Laurel Hill, Pickney. And I don't want somebody on John's Island or James Island with, who knows what their intentions are deciding what I get to do with my property. So I think if you guys look at the properties, you know, one by one, instead of just lumping them in, oh, you're in an overlay, oh, we're going to do whatever, I think you guys need to look at them one by one. Like my property is surrounded by two below and 17, and then vacant lots. I think you guys should really consider, you know, if somebody wants to go in to Mount Pleasant to let them. And if, say I want to build a Sam's Club, just say, no, bad idea.
Sure.
You know, just, you know, have some control over it is what I'm saying versus somebody from a different part of the county.
Time, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, anyway.
Freddie Jenkins.
Freddie Jenkins, 435 Headie Street, Mount Pleasant. I'm here on item number seven. This is my second time speaking on this. I think it's a good thing, a great thing, that you guys are going to try to get a commission together to help the settlement communities. There's a lot of development that is coming in the settlement communities. And I listened to the lady a few minutes ago, and she is absolutely right. If we do not stop some of these developers in the settlement communities, these people are not going to have any place to go. We got mobile homes, we got smaller homes, and developers come in and they want to put 800,000 dollar homes in these places and every five years the taxes go up. So these people are going to be taxed off, they'll be gone. And I don't want to see people living on a reservation or places that they don't want. I'm 70, almost 74 years old, and I've seen the growth in Mount Pleasant. So I'm asking you guys to please, you know, create that task force to help the settlement community so we can stay in these settlement communities. Too many developers are coming in and they want to do what they feel like doing, and it's not fair to the residents that has been living there for over 100 years. And I'm going to volunteer my service if you create that committee. I'm going to volunteer my service if you would have me. Since I've seen so much growth in this community, I can tell you about some things. And the last thing is, in Snalden, a gentleman came in, Richard Plaza, was one of the juke joints down there, and they came in and I don't know that monstrosity they put up, but that's what's happening in the settlement communities. Thank you for your time.
Myra Richardson.
Good day. My name is Myra Snite Richardson. I'm the president of the Hamlin Beach Community Association. I'm here to speak on the community--
Yes, ma'am, we need your address.
2755 Earl Johnson Lane, Mount Pleasant. I'm here to speak on the settlement communities being forced to annex into the town of Mount Pleasant. For those who want to, that's fine, but for the ones that are being forced to annex because they often say you come before you and the owners are requesting, your ordinance say you are required to come here to ask for annexation to become CC instead of S3. They also had a property that's at 2790 Hamlin Beach Road. I don't see it on your agenda. You did the first reading in April. It's not on your agenda, rather was deferred, withdrawn. Where's that property on the minutes to let us know what's going on with that property? I will say that we're not just the only community, the Gulligichi community and settlement communities, we are all facing issues in the town of Mount Pleasant with overdevelopment. We survive natural disasters. We're not going to survive this manly disaster of overdevelopment. We are at the point where too much is too much. When will you as the elected official realize enough is enough? Our roads, our wildlife habitat, our trees, everything's are being destroyed in all of our communities. We've been here for generations, generations, and we're being wiped out because of funding or we want a tax base or we want the money. It's not worth it. Our lives are being destroyed. Our quality of life is being destroyed. I'm asking the people that are here from not just the Gulligichi community, but all of the communities that are tied of development and need you to pause and realize what is being destroyed and taken away because we're not going to get this back. Those that are here and are tied of this overdevelopment, I will ask you to please stand. Please stand. This is your people that have elected you. We can't vote for you, but you have constituents back there that voted you in this position. And if you don't listen to them, prayerfully, they will vote you out. Thank you.
Next, please. George Freeman.
Good evening. George Freeman, 2850 Bowman Road. I would love to be standing here saying how after 30 years of becoming a former Mount Pleasant County Council, that I can say great things about the town of Mount Pleasant Council, but unfortunately I cannot. I'm not here to talk about developers. I'm here to talk about Mount Pleasant government. Back in the 90s, we fought with the council at that time to say, connect all these communities so communities could be connected to get together, where you can get from one place without, to the other, without getting on rifle range road. The council at that time refused to do it. Years later, we kept on still insisting on connecting these communities so you can get from one to the other. I drove through Scotts Creek the other day. You do allow them to walk from Oak Haven and from Harbor Gate, but the road that was there, it never got connected. But now today, I'm hearing about this, we need to connect the communities. And to connect the communities, we need to put a 10 or 12 foot sidewalks through my neighborhood. Now, I don't know about you, but that does not seem fair to me. Since we've been fighting for the means to connect the communities, I think if you would go ahead and connect the communities, there will not be a need to have a 12 foot sidewalk along rifle range road. Between that, Hidden Lakes, there was an opportunity years ago to have a connection for a road to go out of the back of Hidden Lakes to what is now Hungry Neck. It is not connected. If that was connected, the people in Harvard, Hidden Lakes and Center Lakes would have had an access to get to Hungry Neck without getting on to rifle range road. At last, I'll say this. In the early 2000s, the previous council decided that they would build a multipath. The multipath would be built in new development and along new roads. You've done that in some cases. On Chuck Dolly right now, there's two subdivisions that have been built on Chuck Dolly. You have put in the multipath in front of those subdivisions. If you connect, you complete Chuck Dolly, you will have a direct multipath from Coleman Boulevard all the way to Portier Bluff when you complete the section from 6 Mile to Hamlin Road. Thank you.
Mike Van Horn.
Good evening. Mike Van Horn, Ironbridge Drive. Couple of things I want to talk about this evening. First of all, I want to thank all the Mount Pleasant police and also first responders for their efforts on the Isle of Palms situation, along with Carl Ritchie, our former councilman as well. Everybody did an outstanding job. I was personally out on Isle of Palms and I can tell you, it's pretty livid when you see people walking around with, you know, AR-15s that close that are law enforcement and all of a sudden you're just running because you don't know what's going on. So again, I thank, you know, Chief and everyone else that were there to help assist. Second thing I want to talk about is traffic calming. There's been, you know, obviously the 526 has gone down the, you know, tube, so to speak, as far as continuing that. But one of the things I'd like to see Mount Pleasant do is be the leader throughout all of Charleston County and sit there and talk to the business owners that run three different shifts to sit there and try to move those shifts around for the individuals. So instead of folks going from like 8 to 4, maybe they go from 6 to 2. And those businesses that have those three multiple shifts, it'll help alleviate a lot of the traffic that we deal with throughout the county. But again, something that Mount Pleasant can be the leader in the community for in that sense. The last thing, or last two things is I appreciate everybody on the, you know, recently on the committee meetings as far as the $10,000 that you're going to earmark for the possible putting the funds online for individuals to see as far as all the spending for the transparency purpose. And the last thing that I'd like to also say is that, you know, we're just under five months basically, or a little over five months until the November election. And with multiple seats that are up for grabs in November, it's going to be a very crowded race probably between 10 to 16 candidates maybe. But I would suggest and also like to see council again put their heads together to create a forum that all the individuals and the candidates can come together and represent who they are, what they're going to do for Mount Pleasant, because each of those candidates are spending anywhere between a few thousand dollars to, you know, the mayor yourself, in excess of $200,000 for those seats. So it'd be great to get all the, everybody together on that in that sense. Again, Quentin Washington, as I mentioned before, is one of those individuals that would moderate that forum as well. So again, if we could possibly do that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it's all I have signed up, sir. Okay. Is there anyone who got here and did not have time to sign up to speak?
Good evening, council members. My name is Ellen Moore. I live at 1469 Gunnison Street in Carolina Park. First, I'd like to strongly support the issues outlined by residents here tonight related to zoning standards, infrastructure, and our beautiful settlement communities in the town of Mount Pleasant. Our future growth really depends on your reasonable approach. I'd like to really talk about a surprising occurrence that occurred at the Budget Committee meeting last Monday. Mayor Haney requested an exception for the existing requests for funding from the Community Investment Fund account, asking for funding for Housing for All Mount Pleasant of $5,000, though they requested $50,000. There were 11 organizations rated and ranked by the staff based on an existing policy and list of criteria. There are countless requests the town receives for funding. There were five other groups besides Housing for All Mount Pleasant who applied for funding and through this ranking system, they were not eligible for funding based on the criteria the staff had outlined. I find this disrespectful of Mr. Demora and his staff who followed a well-established process to recommend these 11 groups to receive funding. You dismiss this and ask for an exception. I have nothing against Housing for All Mount Pleasant or its leadership. We have 100 new units going into Carolina Park, as you know, on Park Avenue Boulevard probably next year. What concerns me is this group does not have a recent published 990 as required by the IRS and by law. And I have to think the town staff works closely with these groups and their staff and must have had a rationale for ranking 16 other groups ahead of Housing for All Mount Pleasant and not recommending that they receive funding for fiscal 26s from the town and either from our taxpayer dollars and/or other funds that become available through the tourism tax. I strongly suggest you reconsider this request by the mayor, given the political advocacy of Housing for All Mount Pleasant. They have not been funded by the town for seven years from what I can gather. There must be a strong rationale for this and this request was inappropriate and unnecessary. Thank you.
Anyone else? Name and address, please. Two and a half minutes.
Chamberlain Chestnut, 183 Third Avenue in Charleston. I purchased 3638 Zicoma Drive, which is number 91A. It's in zone Charleston, it's in Charleston County. It is owned MHS in Copahoe View. When I first purchased the property, and I've done six other subdivisions in Copahoe View, Charleston County said, yes, you can legally subdivide this. Go pay your Mount Pleasant Waterworks tap fee and you're all good to subdivide. I then got with Mount Pleasant Waterworks. They said, absolutely, you're good to subdivide. Please pay us your tap fee, which I did. I then submitted my final plat to get recorded at Charleston County. They came back and said, we've made a mistake. You cannot subdivide this property due to the annexation of Mount Pleasant. So then I approached Mount Pleasant. I am asking for a rezone to R3, which is identical almost in what the current zoning Charleston County will allow. I'm not asking to build more houses, but if it gets rezoned to R1, which is your future land use, it devalues my property by 50%. I've talked to everyone on the street recently. They do not want these neighbors to become in Mount Pleasant because it also devalued their property by 50%. I am asking for a rezone to R3, again, just to match exactly what I have in Charleston County. If you do not agree with that, I respectfully ask if you can fully deny my annexation of this request. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Richard Happy Sham. I live at 2938 Bennett Charles Road. And I'm here to speak on this commission that y'all plan to form for the settlement community. And the Phillips community whole highly support this effort, you know, but one thing we don't want y'all to do is make the mistake that Charleston County did. You know, when they established the historic commission there, the settlement community wasn't a part of the commission at first. And then they had to go back and change some things and then they let us be a part of it. What I'm saying that if the Mount Pleasant do establish this commission, let us be on at the table when it's established and also be at the table when this gets, after it gets established. I know we're not in the Mount Pleasant, but this ordinance is going to be about us and we need to be there at the table to discuss things about us. You know, years ago, the Phillips community was talking about joining the town of Mount Pleasant. Yes, we had a conversation within, in the community, but what happened was the town and Habitat Village. We wasn't against the Habitat Village, you know, I worked on Habitat House myself, but we was, but we was against the zoning that y'all gave Habitat Village. And what it was, y'all let an outsider come into our community, decide what was going to happen to our community. And when that happened, the people in Phillips said, no, why go into the town when you don't respect us, our wishes at that time? So if this commission comes up, that's what I'm saying, let us be a part of it so we wouldn't have that conflict. You know, we want to have that say, so we're not against development, we're not against people selling property and none of that stuff, but what we are, we are against unwanted changes in our community. And that's why we say, well, we want to be a part of the solution and not just be, you know, but just trying to solve a problem on our back without our say so. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Simmons. I'm the former owner of 3638 Zicoma Road in Mount Pleasant. That when I first bought that property back in 1998, it was complete woods. And I had to go to the county in order to get the zoning, put a mobile home there. They told me when I went to the zoning meeting that, well, what the, what is it, the building, building people told me that if I put two mobile homes on it, it could be two separate properties. And, or I could do a lengthwise mobile home, which I did the lengthwise instead of the two on the property. And now that the, Mr. Chestnut-- And now that the, Mr. Chestnut wants to build two houses on the property, they want him to annex into the town of Mount Pleasant, which would be the only property in all of Copahoe that would be annexed into the town and everybody wants it to remain county. I don't know what else to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
My name's Gwendolyn Robinson and I live at 1650 Georgiana Street in the Hamlin section of Mount Pleasant. I've been listening to the comments and since locating to that area 24 years ago, I've had this concern and that concern is being heightened. For the town to force a resident to, to have to come into the town of Mount Pleasant under force just to get water, to me strikes as unconscionable. A municipality has a responsibility to its citizens to do whatever it can to promote health and safety and that should not have to come at the cost of compromising their property ownership. There are some federal regulations that I'm in the process of researching how this whole thing impacts me as a property owner, the town as the municipality, and how one impacts the other. But it is not fair to have worked, to have sacrificed, to own a property and then have the town tell you, yeah, but you're going to have to give us a stake in it. And I am vehemently against that and I'm working with the group and seeking support in responding to that reality. Thank you so much.
Adam Ferrera, 1660 River Town Country Club Tribe. Mayor, council members and town staff, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you for your hard work, dedication and everything that you do. It's a tough job and we appreciate it. I want to speak tonight about the topic of impact fees and chapter, the amendment to chapter 154 regarding the exemption of development impact fees for those required to relocate due to imminent domain. This amendment is a fair and compassionate step forward. When businesses or families are displaced through no fault of their own, the burden of additional fees can be overwhelming and unjust. Providing this exemption sends a clear message that Mount Pleasant stands for its residents and its business owners during difficult transitions. Thank you again, Mayor Haney, council members and staff for recognizing this need and working towards a more equitable solution. I respectfully urge your support of this amendment on behalf of all those who face relocation due to imminent domain. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Perry Rowan, 2004 Brook Hill Parkway. First, I'd like to thank all of our citizens that volunteered their time to sit on these commissions and task force. They serve a valuable purpose for the people of the town as being liaisons and be able to provide a valuable input to council as well as staff. One thing I would like to ask is moving forward with more discussions of these types of task force and commissions, is that council really look at who's being placed on these commissions? The recommendations, these commissions vote and provide recommendations to council and staff, and I think it's very important that those commissions and task force are actually made up of residents because when they give recommendations to council, those recommendations can have a financial impact on the taxpaying residents of the town as well as use and enjoyment of their property. Certainly when it comes to bringing all stakeholders forward to be able to have conversations with committees or commissions or task force, I think there's an opportunity for that through public comment. And also the chairs of those commissions or task force can certainly invite those stakeholders in to receive input. But at the end of the day, I think it's very important that council realize that you need to make sure that the taxpaying residents that are often impacted by decisions that are made by these commissions committees with the recommendations they make are seated with Mount Pleasant residents. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Puschet Grant. I reside at 1684 Latroy Avenue in the Snalden community. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I am concerned about how we're losing the opportunities, the economic challenge, opportunities within our own communities that our ancestors have worked with and tried to keep in our families to pass on to our upcoming generations. I'm concerned that council a few years back had a task force that was put together, like you're saying now, to work out something to help work with us. Well, I can say I have not seen anything that was turned in on that list, one being no forced annexation for Snalden because that was the only thing that we requested and that has not gone away. And I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned that when you make the selection, that you not only just consider just the leaders of each one of the communities, but those of us that are residents of the community that are actively involved. Because, because each one of the communities may have leaders, leaders may not necessarily be the ones that are comfortable speaking up on behalf of everyone in our communities. So those are the two things I'm concerned about. The selection of this, I guess, task force and are we really going to do something if you have this task force this time that is going to benefit us both going forward economically, that we can actually maintain our properties and pass it on to our other generations and just protect us? Because we're, we're losing daily even what protection is from county in place and even, I really am just confused as to why the, the relationship between the county and the town. I'm still trying to understand that. So to me, it doesn't really make sense. So help me understand and make it make sense. Thank you.
My name is Joshua Blackwell. I'm a property owner at Copahoe View at 1615 McComa Road. And when it comes to agenda item 91A for 3638 Zocoma Drive, I am against the annexation of the property into the town of Mount Pleasant. I believe with this annexation, this would devalue all of the surrounding properties and will cause a substantial increase in property taxes. In addition, with the annexation, it creates a downzoning that would also change the utilization of the properties, which would ultimately impact the overall value of the community. We are allowed to subdivide our lot in Charleston County, but if the property is annexed into Mount Pleasant, they will not allow it. Our property value will go down by 50% if annexed in. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
My name is Jordan Johnson, a property owner of 1474 Boston Grove Road in the Hamlin community. And I just came to say, when my wife and I purchased this property, we were originally told that we had to annex into Mount Pleasant to get water and sewer, unknowing to me at the time, you know, we went about that process, again, not knowing that we did not need to be annexed to go about getting water and sewer. And so I just wanted to inform you guys in the council, letting y'all know that we, I'm here because I was forced to be here by Mount Pleasant Waterworks. Thank you.
My name's Peter Cooten. I live at 23 Anderson Avenue in Charleston. I'm a local realtor and I represent some property owners in Copahoe View subdivision in Mount Pleasant, including Chamberlain Chestnut. When it comes to agenda item 91A, I'm against the annexation of properties, including lots, into the town of Mount Pleasant. I believe this will devalue all of the surrounding properties and will cause a substantial increase in property taxes over time. In addition, with the annexation, it creates a downzoning that would also change the utilization of the properties, which would ultimately impact the overall values in the community. For example, my client Chamberlain is the owner of 3638 Zocoma Road, which is currently Charleston County. He would be allowed to subdivide his lot in Charleston County, but if the property is annexed into Mount Pleasant, as the town is requesting, they will not allow it. His property value will then go down by 50% if annexed in, which not only affects him, but also all the other property owners in the community. There are many properties being subdivided right now in Copahoe View, but because he touches a town of Mount Pleasant property in the rear, his value goes down 50% and his neighbors across the street can be subdivided. This is unfair. He's already paid Mount Pleasant Waterworks for the second impact fee and now he's being told no. Forced annexation is ruining the property values. Please deny the annexation request. I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
My name is Taylor Bush. I live at 164 Civitas Street here in Mount Pleasant. And I'm just going to be real brief. I'm just here to speak on item number four and just ask that you, respectfully ask that you approve our request to defer this item to allow us some time to meet with the property owners in the area and have some discussion with them about this agenda item. Thank you very much.
If there's no one else for public comment, we will conclude the public comment period and move to item number seven, discussion and possible action to create a process parallel to the county's efforts to preserve historic settlement communities. And I have, I have one thing I need to say since this is a discussion item. We did change the annexation law. Those of you who said that we did not, maybe you weren't here when we changed that. But if sewer is already available through Mount Pleasant Waterworks to your residents and you are not in the town and you have a septic tank, you have one residential equivalent unit, which is how they measure those things, you may tap into that sewer if it is already available without annexing into the town. This does not apply to undeveloped lots for the reason that we heard tonight, so that we do not see the destruction of our settlement communities because water and sewer is available and next thing you know, you've got more new houses in your settlement community than you ever wanted. So Councilman Rambo helped move that through. He and I serve on Mount Pleasant Waterworks. That was the first change, Mr. Paglioni, in how many years in our annexation? 20, 30 years? Something like that? 20 or 30 years. That is to get septic tanks out of the ground and man, to be fair to citizens who have lived there all of their life, so a sewer is available and the septic tank comes out of the ground and sewer is available, you do not have to annex into the town just to get access to the sewer if you already have a residential equivalent unit, one for one. And that is to protect the health of the citizens and to keep development from happening. I've been doing this for 10 years now and Mr. Santos has been fighting these battles for 10 years. And, and so, what's that? No, I'm saying that, I'm sorry, he and I together for 10 years. He's been doing it for 20 something years. But that is to keep people from buying up lots and then just subdividing them and changing the character of our settlement community. It is the fairest way for you to have sewer and stay in your home and not have to annex in if it is an existing home that already has a septic tank in the ground. You have a healthier ecosystem right there, you have a more dependable thing, and now Mount Pleasant Waterworks offers for $15 a, to inspect it every year, to pump it when it needs pumping, and you get insurance for if it ever, if your septic tank ever fails, if you can't annex, not annex, if you can't access sewer. So I just wanted to clear some of that up. We did listen to that task force from then and we worked on that and we got something that is, is legal and will stand the test of time. So it's just hard when, when you've worked on these things and when you've listened to get criticized unfairly for actions that we took to make your community more healthy and to protect you from overdevelopment. And I, and I stand by that and this council passed that, well, not this council, but when it passed, it was passed unanimously. So as we have this discussion about settlement communities, we have done things to do that. We have an overlay district, the Sweetgrass Overlay. We have community conservation that was based on input that we got through our comprehensive plan process over multiple iterations. So maybe sometimes who you need to talk to is your neighbor who is selling their home. We cannot stop private sales. The government cannot stop one individual from selling their property to another. We don't have that authority under the law. But we have done many things to protect the settlement communities. And I think some of the Mount Pleasant bashing needs to stop because we have listened and we've taken political risk to do that. And so anyway, I just needed to get that air cleared as we move forward on this. And I commend council at the committee level and all of that for, we want to work with the county and, and I think the county's step right now for their moratorium is great. And I've spoken to our East Cooper representatives on council and they both want us to, to be able to work along with the county and not work against the county. And I think that's a great thing. So let me turn it over to the head of the planning committee because I know y'all took this up.
Yes, actually, Ms. Reed, if you want to go ahead and share.
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of slides. Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. This does come to you after discussion at the committee level. And I really just had a couple of slides and I have some maps if y'all want to look at those. But this is a community-driven effort that the county's been facilitating. There are three settlement communities east of the Cooper that have that designated historic overlay. It's the Phillips community, the Ten Mile community, and the Hamlin Beach community. And all development within that historic overlay is subject to review and approval by the county's Historic Preservation Commission. And the moratorium that we've heard comments about tonight is a two-year moratorium that the county passed, runs from July 24 to July 26. That moratorium is on subdivision of lots in, within that historic, those historic boundaries, any, anything of four lots and greater. And that two-year moratorium is so that they can further study these specific areas. There is a Historic Preservation Overlay ordinance, but it is countywide. And so the thought was to put the two-year moratorium in place to prevent larger developments, larger subdivisions, while the county works with these three communities to better tailor the guidelines that are specific to their settlement community. And so that's what's in place right now. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I also have maps of all three of those areas that the county has already defined their geographic boundaries.
So one of the issues that we talked about at committee was that how do we create a historic overlay for properties that aren't in the town of Mount Pleasant, right? So we, there's, there's, there's no properties to place under historic overlay at this time because they are not in the town and they do not want to annex into the town. So one of the discussions was, is it possible to create something so that should they annex into the town, something that maps alongside with the county overlays so that if anyone in that does annex into the town, they're subject to a parallel, you know, a parallel historic preservation sort of thing? And I, I think there was also some, we're not, there was no discussion on council about creating a task force or creating a commission of any kind at this point in time. It was just discussion of this sort of process parallel. I mean, if we were to ever have properties under historic preservation, then we would have to have a commission. But at this time, there is, there's nothing, there's no commission to be had because there's no properties that would be subject to it. So I think that was my question to you at committee was what sort of things, what sort of action can we take when there are no properties to be under the overlay? So, um, so I think that was my question to you at committee, um, was what sort of things, what sort of action can we take when there are no properties to be under the overlay?
I'll take that. Well, I think I would anticipate that there will be properties. And th- those overlay rules, whatever they might be, whatever is promulgated by the county, i- if the town wishes to participate in that process and, um, enact similar rules, similar development rules, then that would be there for those properties that, that elected the annex. So we would have rules in place at that time. And in the end, the hope is that it would bring some consistency.
And I think the other thing is there's far more than three settlement communities in the town of Mount Pleasant. There's ten, maybe twelve. And so I would think that anything we would create, we would wanna cover every settlement community as opposed to just the ones that are in the county, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so the, the legal question there would be, um, how do we decide down to the parcel data what is in a settlement community? How, how do, I mean, this, this is down to the, gotta be down to the parcel data. How does that get decided? Can we, can we see the map?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the, the three communities, as I said, this is community-driven. So the county didn't wanna force this historic overlay. And the, the three communities that were interested in doing it were the three that I just mentioned. So their boundaries have been, um, defined through a process, uh, in working with the community. And you can see some properties notched out and that's because when the county formed these overlays, they went ahead and, and excluded properties that were already in the town. So Ms. Whitley's correct that the, there are no properties currently in the overlay and in the town. If they were in the town, they were excluded from the overlay. And so that's why you can see these, these, you know, right there on Theodore, you can see that area right there that's already been removed from the overlay. And I, I would like to add to what Mr. Pagliarini said is that town staff has been working and continues to work very closely with the county staff in this process. So we're involved in those community meetings and, and following what those, what the guidelines and what that, what those specific overlays are gonna look like. And I know that we've talked, um, about the fact that, um, how do you create a commission, a new commission? When there's no, what for one property, for two properties? And so we've also talked with the county staff, our counterparts at the county about, um, perhaps exploring some sort of joint commission. That way, whether you're in the town, you're in the county, it's the same commission. And, and those are things that obviously Mr. Pagliarini is gonna have to look at. But it, it's, it's gonna have its challenges, but, um, but that's kind of where we're at and we continue to coordinate with the county on these things.
Is, is the concept here that, um, cause we ha- we have had for a long time before I was ever an elected official, the Old Village Historic Commission, which is now the Historic District Preservation Commission. And it has boundaries, right?
Correct.
And so when somebody wants to make a change, um, build something new or something there, it doesn't come to council. It is decided at that level, right? It's self-governing might not be the right word, but they apply the unique standards of that historic district to things that are being requested, right?
Right, based on a study, of course.
Based on a study.
Right.
Um, the houses have to be listed, uh, as it were. But those don't come to us. So would this be a commission that has that kind of governing authority?
The way I understand and anticipate it would be, would be precisely that, meaning there'd be rules, regulations, development standards, uh, limitations like, like we have all over the town, um, and every municipality and, and county has. And they would have to be applied by that commission. So, um, that's where.
So if the property's in the town of Mount Pleasant, can a joint commission govern that? Or can only the Mount Pleasant members vote on one that's in the town? Because hon- honestly, we're only talking about what's in the town of Mount Pleasant because we have no authority.
Right.
Otherwise.
So, um, Ms. Whitley raised an excellent question and it sort of overrides everything is what, what are the delineate, delineated areas?
Right.
The county is elected to choose only county properties. It excludes town properties. As you said, Mayor, we'd need a TMS number by TMS number analysis to determine what would be in the district, whatever future properties come in.
Right.
Um, I think, uh, that the legal challenge is what sort of enforcement mechanism can we, um, could we, could we approve? And that is, does it consist of county, town, anybody else, and then what is their authority? Um, I will tell you that that is a significant, significant challenge. I suspect that is partly why the county put a two-year moratorium.
Yes.
Um, in, in order to develop all of this.
Right.
And whether they are able to do so within the next year and two months, you know, w- will be determined. But, you know, we don't know at this point what that would look like.
So would a good start, and did the committee discuss this? Would a similar moratorium for the town of Mount Pleasant, properties and settlement communities be a legally viable option?
It is a viable option. What I would say again, um, is Ms. Whitley raised the precise question is we'd have to consider, we can only, we can only govern those properties that are currently in the town.
In the town.
And of course, any of those that would be annexed in, in the, in the future within the, the district. So we'd have to define the area and that would require a little bit, uh, maybe a fair amount of effort to determine the properties that were left out by the county. Um, I would also say that that moratorium, as, as Michelle stated, only applies to larger-scale developments as the county defines it, which is more than four-lot subdivision. So it's not.
Stop all.
Right, sir. And, and, and that needs to be understood. It is not a restriction on development. If, if properties currently in the town or were annexed in, um, that as long as they were four or under, um, subdivision, that would be permitted and of course, it would be developed under current standards pending any decisions by the county or the town.
Okay.
I, I have a couple of questions. Could you, I think there's one more neighborhood with the slide I was helping to see as well. So when, when you use the term, um, maybe that, I think the gentleman was here on the Tupelo thing. Was that, is that, was that the same?
That was the, yeah, that was the Ten Mile Community.
So when you say four or under, is that per acre? Or is that's four, it could be ten acres and it's divided by four. So they haven't defined it by the acre, they're saying. They're saying by parcel.
They have not defined it by the acre. It's simply major development, minor development, and they consider major five or more, minor four or fewer.
And they haven't presented. They have a year to present something, a year and two months?
Well, the moratorium lasts until July of twenty-twenty-six and we're, we're all aware that that could be extended or modified.
Is that, is that a legal moratorium? Sometimes moratoriums aren't exactly.
I can't answer for the county whether there's this legal or how they've analyzed it.
Like, I'm wondering if we're, like, are we following something that may be not be legal and get overthrown anyway, right? So, um, moratoriums have to be proven on, on, on what the, what the point of them is, right? And if they're not, you could be sued and losing that lawsuit and be, be overthrown for sure. So I guess what I'm saying, we're, we're talking about following a moratorium that we may or may not know is legal or is not legal. Cause that's the fact, right? Some could be legal and some could not be legal, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, um, and then my question would be whether the council's gonna get it done, you know, um, on the county side. So really concerned, I mean, I'm just not saying again, uh, for or against the moratorium here, but really concerned whether we know if we're asking to follow a legal moratorium or whether it's not legal. And so we're kind of voting blindly on that, I guess, is.
I'll answer that question this way. If council wants to move forward with, this is the discussion item. And if it moves forward, that is certainly something that our department will undertake and provide a full review for council.
Yes, ma'am.
So the, the three communities that are currently under historic preservation, this was a community-driven effort?
Right.
Was there a petition signed? Was it like the majority, like what percentage of the community wanted in on this historic? Was it every, every single parcel got approval? Like, how did that work?
Uh, I don't have all the details. I think there was a majority or there was a petition. I, I, I'm not entirely sure, but I know that it was community-driven. And, um, and that the other communities have not, that's not been pursued because there's not been a community effort to do it.
So I would hesitate, even though I said we should protect all of them, like, I, I would hesitate to do something that's not community-driven. Because I think.
Right.
One of the things that with this historic preservation is it restricts, it restricts development, um, in a way that preserves these communities, but also restricts property owners from exploiting the full value of their property, right? Like, if you can't do what everyone else can do with their property because you're under historic preservation, that, you know, that, you, and, and for people who have sold out, like you were saying, you know, we can't control private sales. So if people want to sell out of the community and sell out of their, their, and they don't wanna be part of the community anymore, um, this impacts their, their value. And so I think, I think if we were to move in this direction, I would think we would need to truly listen to the community's desires of how they want to be preserved. Because there are, I mean, if everyone in the community just was like, we, we're not selling to anyone ever, then we wouldn't even be here right now, right? But the problem is that people are selling out and developers are coming in. And so how do we, how do we balance? I, I just hate to be paternalistic and say, well, we're just gonna throw historic preservation on there, um, and, and stop people from getting value out of their properties. But is, and I, I, we had the settlement community task force to try to help, um, you know, raise awareness in the, in, in those communities of resources that were available, like, like, is it a county road? Is it a D O, is it a, the state road? You know, if they want Mount Pleasant to come clean their ditches, if they're not, they're not in Mount Pleasant. So it's not our responsibility to clean their ditches or, or build a sidewalk. It would be the county. It would be, it would be the state. Um, so trying to, to reconcile the fact that they're within our footprint of our community and yet they're not under the governance of our community. So I think this is a really, this is a very, um, difficult situation. And, and I think we want to help preserve, it is a designated Gulligichi corridor. But how do we do so in a way that honors the wishes of the residents of the community? So I think, I think we need to, we need to truly understand that before we throw anything out there.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tinkie.
Um, one of our constituents mentioned, when in doubt, ask the customer first. And so I think the customer are the constituents in the Hamlin Beach community that which, which has brought this up. And my understanding is that, uh, from correspondence I've received and communications I've had, that they're in the process of organizing and coming together with their thoughts and feelings relative to this and potentially even, um, selecting, um, stakeholders to, uh, speak with a voice or voices. It's their community. And, but the county and the town impacts them. And they'd like to see that the town and county work together in unison as much as possible, if that makes sense, in parallel path to work together and listen and learn, uh, how we can best, uh, serve a community that's been there before the town was formed. That these type of protections happened with the Historic District Planning Commission. They were envisioned by the, uh, the Comprehensive Plan. They're envisioned by the Settlement Community Plan. They're in place in three hundred communities around the town called HOAs and POAs. So there are protections that are provided there. So most of the town has some form of protection. And so this, uh, in a pause would allow us to listen and learn how those protections could be extended in a way that the majority of the town is protected today. And so I, I think it's important, we don't know enough of what we don't know right now, but I think it's important to take that pause. And I think in listening to our county council persons that many times are divergent in their opinions, they have said they really want to work, as Ms. Reed has said, work together with staff on sta- staff and staff and also with county council members and town council members to also be in a joint meeting to listen and learn to what the needs of the Hamlin community are. So I think it's important for us to do that because it's important to us protect the culture that we have, which is really talked about in the civic pride and the sense of community, both in green and gray space to help us. So I would just encourage us to figure out a way to do that, uh, in, in the best possible manner.
So, okay, Mr. Rambo.
Yeah, so my thoughts are just that, uh, in echoing what Ms. Whitley said as well. Um, look, we, we represent those who are in the town of Mount Pleasant. That's who votes on us. That's who pays taxes to the town of Mount Pleasant. If you're in an unannexed donut hole, you do not pay taxes to the town of Mount Pleasant. Um, you do not vote for town council. It is your choice whether you want to annex or not. Um, and so I don't know how we even go about forming, uh, some sort of committee that's a town committee, but it, it doesn't represent properties in the town. It just, it just doesn't add up. And then also, um, to Mr. Tinkie's point, uh, I live in one of the only neighborhoods in Mount Pleasant that doesn't have an HOA. And we all love that there's no HOA. So there's, there would probably be a few people that would come to a meeting and say, yeah, let's form an HOA. But the vast majority would say, no, 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 no. We didn't want an extra layer of governance. Um, and so I think that there's probably, um, a lot of people in these areas, and I've heard from some of them that feel that way. And, and to that same extent, uh, feel that, um, these actions could potentially significantly devalue their biggest asset, their, their biggest asset, which is their home that's been passed down to them. Um, and, and so I, I have an issue with that as well. So I, I don't think that there's, I don't know what the answer is, but I don't think a commission is the right way to go because we, they're not in the town. I mean, I don't know how to get around that.
Be clear, I'm not asking for a commission. I'm asking just for a listen and learn sessions. Just, just simple listen and learn and figure it out. Because what we do as a town and what the county does, does impact these communities. And, uh, there may be disparate ways that that's handled and ma- maybe that's okay. But it, it'd be good if we could at least listen and learn.
Okay, that sounds great.
Mr. Chapman hasn't spoken yet. Yes, and then Mr. Brownstein.
Mayor, we've, we've been talking a lot tonight and we've been listening a lot tonight. One of the things we don't have is the specific information that the county is doing. Um, I would like to make a motion that we direct staff to bring to us specifically what the county is doing, how they're doing it, and who specifically it affects. And the legal, um, um, responsibility that they have accepted to do this. And once we have that, I think we have a better opportunity to, to do more. But until we have it, all we've been talking about tonight is what the county has done or what it hasn't done, where the county is doing it and where they're not doing it. I would like to know what they are doing it, what they are doing. And if it is, has been, I guess, questioned in terms of illegality, bring it back to us. Then we can make some informed decisions.
Okay, was that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Yep.
We got a second from somewhere.
Yes.
Okay, all right, uh, Mr. Brownstein.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, I am in support of pausing these major subdivisions, uh, that are occurring uh, within the settlement communities. We're never gonna get anywhere if we don't take a first step. And, and I think there's a lot of jumping to what the final outcome of the county's effort is going to be. And I, I don't think anybody knows that. I don't think the, the county knows that either. Um, but what is important is that we're not subverting that county process that's ongoing right now. And that's what's occurring when large, um, property owners approach us to annex into the town. They're annexing expressly because, um, not only do they want the sewer, but they want the ability to immediately subdivide, which is something that the county is, is not currently allowing. Uh, and so I don't, I don't think that we need to know exactly where we're going. Um, but we do need to take that first step of, of taking a breath and pausing and making sure that the actions that we're taking, um, from thereafter are well thought out, they're reasoned, and they're centered on the historic preservation of these communities. And so I, I'm in favor of duplicating that, that county moratorium, although those properties are not within the town. Um, you know, there's, there's precedence for it. We have long-range plans that dictate, should areas come into the town, how they would be zoned. I think this would be a very similar effort. Um, I just think that the current, um, status quo is, is untenable at this point. Um, we need to make sure that the people that are annexing their properties into the town are doing so for the right reason and that they wanna join the town. They wanna enjoy the services that we provide. That they're not doing it to escape something that the county is doing. Uh, and so I think there is a really good opportunity for us to take a breath right now, um, to put a pause on these major subdivisions without impacting people's ability, um, to build, you know, a house or two here and there. Um, these are really just affecting big, um, developments within these neighborhoods. And I think there's also a really good opportunity for the. And I think there's also a really good opportunity for the county and the town to get on the same page so that we're not creating, in essence, which, which is zoning shopping. Like, you know, let's go to the county, see what they're able to do. And then we'll go to the town and see what they're able to do, and we'll pick the, the most advantageous one. We really, I think, would benefit from a regional planning effort. And, and so I would like to see us move forward with duplicating their moratorium. We may not know where we're gonna get, where we're gonna land in the end, but I think that we at least need to let the county's process play out and see if we can become a partner in it. So thank you for your attention. Appreciate it.
Okay, the motion on the floor is, is to have staff bring to council what the county is planning to do in these historic districts that they have. That's, that's the motion, and there's been no amendment to that. Yes, ma'am?
I wanted to ask Ms. Reed, it came up in committee that when we did the, the hubs for accommodations, I mean, there are properties in there that don't have hotels, but in the future they might. So do we have these areas defined the way we did the hubs in our comprehensive plan? To give us kind of a rough area of what would constitute a settlement community?
I think we have followed the county's description or boundaries. And so I don't know that we have any, any separate from what they've already defined.
I'm thinking more for the, the other communities within Mount Pleasant that are, you know, other than these three. Do we have anything that
I don't think we have any set, set boundaries. No, not parcel by parcel. I don't believe so.
Because when we did the hotel accommodations, we had some hubs that were already set up, so we just went with that. I feel like if we could define those areas, then we could get engagement from the broader community. I mean, this, for me, has been something that I've wanted us to do. That if we can protect these communities, then they might want to annex into the town. We may come up with, with better protections than what the county is doing. Somehow they feel safer to stay within the county. We've tried to match, you know, with community conservation, some of the zoning in case some properties do come into the town. But I feel like that we, we may be able to do better by these communities, but we just need to have this conversation. We need to define the areas. So, so I would like to see us start the process and have that dialogue.
I agree. And, and having the pre-meeting, meeting with the attorney, one of the things, and I don't know if you wanna say this or if you want me to, to say it, but talk about, if you would, the, what we don't want in terms of coming up with our own historical designation regulations as opposed to when the county finally comes out with theirs, please.
Right, sir. I, I think, as has been stated, there's consistency is key. What I would also say is that, let's presume that there is a matching, a, a, a matching pause. You, if properties are annexed during that time period, they can still be developed. Again, subject to the restriction on number of lots subdivision. But they could be developed, and I think at least one concern we would have is what is gonna happen? If, if it's developed and there's a set of rules that come out that are agreed to, you can certainly during the interim have development that may not be wanted. And, and that is a concern. Because again, we're not, the, the, it's not a pause on developing anything. Obviously, people are gonna be able to develop their properties. And so we would, we can't predict what, what is going to come out. And Mr. Chapman, I, you, you know, once we get a better idea, if anything, what the county is moving forward with, it would help. But it still leads to potential disparate results, maybe by next July.
I just, I just wanted to point out one thing. Can, can you please go back to the slide with the zonings, the base zonings?
Of course.
And I just wanted to point out, so our, the, the work that was done to match the CC district with the county's S three district, our CC district is actually slightly more restrictive. There's larger setbacks, there's a larger minimum lot width. So we're actually, are, the base zoning of these areas is more restrictive in the town. Also, they're not coming to us to zoning shop. They have to come to us to develop because they can't get, they won't get water and sewer to develop new properties or, or subdivide homes, or subdivide lots. They have to come to us because they need water and sewer to be able to do that. And so I think that, that there's a lot of work that's been done and, and the base zonings, that's anyway.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor about having council, having staff bring back to council what the county is doing. And just for clarification on, on this, probably through committees, would that be the intention of that, Mr. Chapman?
Yes, sir.
Through committees and then committees, okay. Are we prepared to vote on that motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see if I can add an amendment. I'd like to make sure that what the, the town staff comes back with includes a, a, I guess, a matching copy of the, the moratorium that's in effect for the county. So we could see what that would look like for us in the town. So not only just a general description of what they're doing, but an actual, you know, the map of the moratorium, the language of the moratorium, so that if we do decide that we would like to match what they're doing, we have everything in hand.
Okay, is there a second? And there is a second. Okay, so just bring back the moratorium information. This is amendment to, to bring back all the information. Okay?
Yes, but to specifically make sure that we have the, the moratorium information in hand. So if we decide to pursue it, we can move forward.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the amendment carries. All right, so we have the, the primary motion as amended, prepared to vote. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we will get that information and take a first step knowing, knowing what we know, yes?
And, and Mayor, I know we heard some comments during public comment about we didn't do anything when we were looking at the settlement communities back in 2019. This slide that you're looking at is a big deal. The fact that we created community conservation districts to help the settlement communities, if they wanted to annex, show them that they were going to be better off in the town in terms of protecting the size and the types of development that could occur better off than they would be in the county.
I want to also add that, that at great expense and risk, we are also fighting a, the development of a tract of land that will greatly affect a settlement community, that if they get sewer and water and stay in the county, that they can develop a minimum of 1,600 homes in the county. And, and we are fighting that battle and we are taking the lead on, on that. So we, we are doing a lot to protect our settlement communities and, and the county around them. Item number eight is consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to pass? And please flip the page to see A and B.
So moved.
All right, motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda items, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Final readings of consent agenda items, A and B.
Item nine, planning new business. Ms. Reed, take us to A, one, nine, eight.
Move to approve, item A one, the annexation.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to approve the annexation of nine, eight, one. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
First reading ordinance number two, five, zero, two, four.
Item two is the zoning of that property.
Move to approve, to zone the property R three.
Second.
Second. Okay, to approve?
To approve R three. And the reason being is it's, it's near an exact match of what the county offers. I think it's fair. I think our future land use map is not really correct for that area. The R three zoning is what fits that area and it matches the county. I think it's the fair thing to do.
To add to, I'm sorry.
Yeah, hold, hold on a second. We have a motion, we have a second. Did you, yes, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Oh, so I was just gonna add, to add with, Mr. Rambo said there is precedence within that immediate area. There's, there's other lots that, that have been subdivided within the county.
Just, that's right.
Can we look at, yes, this. Now, if this is subdivided, that lot with the green star will be in half. Is that right?
If it's a, if a subdivision was approved, yes.
If R three, if it becomes R three, this will be two lots.
Well, if it, if it were zoned R three, there is the possibility that they could apply to the planning commission to subdivide. Not having measured it out, I anticipate they would have to ask for some waivers. And it would be up to the planning commission to approve that. It would not, they would not automatically get, be able to subdivide.
I mean, to me, when you look at this entire community, these are all the size of R one, not R three. So you're gonna put an R three lot right smack in the middle of, of this community that is obviously more in line with R one. Cause there's one at the bottom that's already annexed, that's R one down at the bottom, this red rectangle. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. You're right, right there.
Yeah, so this is more in line with what we have annexed is R one, not R three. And when one goes, there goes the rest of the street. So for me, it, it should remain R one.
A question I have, a, a, a point, a point that was raised, and, and I'm, I guess I'm looking at the planning committee members. If, if new houses are going to be built there, are these houses gonna be less or less expensive than the existing houses in the neighborhood? Because I, I cannot figure out how, if this was annexed, that it was gonna cause everybody's taxes to go up unless these are gonna be built for cheaper because the minute they go on the market, right, and they sell, they're gonna be used as comps and they're gonna drive up the price of the neighborhood, which upon reassessment drives up everybody's taxes. And I, I, I could not connect those dots to how annexing into the town was gonna cause everybody else's taxes to go up. Because the values of those houses are gonna be the same in the county as they are in the town, right? And I, I mean, unless they're gonna build it for $150 a foot, and I don't think anybody's doing that anymore. I'm betting this is gonna be built at current rates and gonna be sold at current rates, which is probably a heck of a lot more than the houses that are already there. And I, you know, that might have been some more Mount Pleasant bashing tonight that, that by annexing into the town, it's gonna cause everybody's tax, everybody's, I, I just, if y'all wanna help me out on that. But the taxes would go up. So, anyway.
They'd have to pay our district taxes along with county taxes currently.
Right.
So our taxes would be advantageous.
Okay. All right, so, yes, ma'am, you're right.
The Somerset Oaks, is that R three? That's zone, that's in the town or is that in the county?
That's in the town. That's a planned development.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So Ms. I, did I get you right? The property is where the star is and everything around it is R one.
Well, it's in the county, but if you look at the lot size, they appear to be, you see our R one lot at the bottom.
And how many subdivisions will R three allow?
She said potentially two lots. This would be split in half, right?
With the R three zoning, there's the potential to, to subdivide this property. But again, planning commission would have to approve that, and I anticipate they would need some waivers from the width to depth ratio, just, just looking at it. In the county, it does have the same standards, R three for MH, what it's manufactured housing in the county. I, I, I suspect when you look at the county's development standards, the lot sizes are typically required to be increased if it's on septic. So while they, well, I would guess that if it's on septic, you would only be able to get one lot. If you were to get sewer in the county, it would probably be the same. You would be able to subdivide and get two lots. If that makes sense.
So, so what, what, from, from the applicant, one is being gained by getting R three unless it's to subdivide the lot. Is there, is there a factor that I'm missing? That's to make it two lots?
Just, just to clarify, I think basically it's just that under the current zoning in the county, that's what's allowed. And there are multiple properties on this street, basically, R one lot, but they're not one structure. There's multiple structures on lots. That's how a lot of these are done. So anyway, it matches the county zoning. So I, to me, that's a fair way to do it and it gets another septic tank out of the ground.
Well, first of all, I trust our planning commission. I'm sorry, some people here don't. I trust that they're gonna do the right thing if somebody comes and wants to subdivide. I also invite council to go look and see what's out there. Go look at the development that's out there. The age of a number of houses or even manufacturing homes. So what we're doing, I think, is the right thing, the fair thing for both parties. And I, I seconded Mr. Rambo's motion, and I continue to second it.
So let me, let me clarify, the planning commission recommended denial on the R three.
They said denial.
In which case, I'm still feeling that they're gonna do the right thing if, if we, if we do the right thing for the property.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, the motion is to approve R three. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. How many no's were there? Three? Okay, motion carries. Four, okay, so five, four. Two which? So it's five, four.
And Tinkie. Tinkie.
These two, the two ladies, me?
And Tinkie.
Councilman Tinkie. So five, four, the motion carries.
First reading ordinance number two, five, zero, two, five.
Okay, I understand item number three has been removed.
Correct, for the record, that has been removed by staff.
By staff. Okay, so we are at item number four.
I move to defer item four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to defer. And is that at the request also of the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
This is an applicant request, yes.
Just to be clear. All right, any discussion on the deferral?
I'm comfortable with the denial at this time. I think garage condo, not a use that the community wants. And I don't think a month deferral is gonna change that.
However, this motion is, is to defer.
Is to defer.
Right. Any other comment? All right, all in favor of the motion to defer, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Three? Three no's. Six, three, motion carries.
Me, the mayor, and, and Councilman Tinkie.
Councilman Tinkie.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I'm only deferring to be fair.
That's fine.
And that's it. I will say that in paper recently, it talked about a vehicle condominium on Daniel Island that was going to have a kitchen. And I was very surprised to hear that. Concern being living in there, so.
Okay, item number five, has that been withdrawn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, item five has been withdrawn. Item six?
Move to deny.
Motion to deny. We have a motion and a second. We are in discussion.
So my thought for this is it's a very precarious time for seaside farms with the Harris Teeter closing up shop. There's not a specific proposal for a hotel to go there. And I think that we would be doing our citizens a disservice if we open up that PD to allow a hotel when so much uncertainty in that development exists.
I'd like to say I, I agree in, in my experience. My ten years, which don't compare to Councilman Santos's twenty-something years, but I've been doing it with him for ten years. I think we have planned developments for a reason, and one reason was for this to be self-contained and adding another hotel when there's already one there is, is counter to that purpose. So I, I will be voting to deny. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I did have a question on planning commission's talk, discussion of the twenty-five rooms. So is that, is that a hub that allows the twenty-five rooms? Just, just to be clear, so I understand. And then this was asking for a full-blown hotel, a hundred and fifty rooms or something of the sort.
Yes, sir. So the, the request is for a hotel, presumably a, a, your typical standard-sized hotel. The planning commission recommended approval with the condition that it be a, no more than a boutique hotel, which the new definition of that is twenty-five rooms. It used to be fifty rooms. And it was, that came out of what Ms. Hyatt had mentioned earlier about those hubs that were created a couple of years ago. This hub is specifically designated for a boutique hotel. And so that was why that condition was attached to the approval. And that was how that was supported and comes to you.
But to clarify, the PD only allowed one hotel, so this would be a change to add a second hotel.
Right.
In general, okay.
This wasn't an AB. If it was AB, they would have a hotel by rights.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is to deny. All in favor of the denial, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven. Hold on, did I get that right? Six, seven? Item seven, is this the ordinance to amend impact fees in, in the case of an involuntary conversion?
It is, Mayor. That, that is what came out of planning committee, and the specifics are that relocation of an existing commercial or residential development, when such development was required by a condemning authority to relocate as a result of the proper exercise of eminent domain. And there are some conditions. It must have the same use of land and all materially equivalent square footage. The relocated development does not result in an increase in the number of service units or place new demands on recreation facilities, fire, municipal facilities, or our transportation system. And that the relocated development was situated within the corporate limits of the town of Mount Pleasant. So those are the conditions. Again, I think as was stated at committee, this is a very rare occurrence, yet it could be one that is significantly impactful.
Okay.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Yes, sir, Mr. Rambo.
I just do have a question. So you said that it would be contentious, so the same use, I get that. The same square footage. So if they built like something, say, slightly more square footage, they would just pay the difference.
That's my, yes, sir.
It would basically be a credit from the previous, okay, all that's fair. But then the other part was unless it's in an area that would create a concern, how do you define that? And that seems like that could be abused.
I'm not sure it's the, I'm not sure it's the area, but it would be an increase in facility usage. So I, I don't know.
Isn't that defined by the use?
Mostly, yes, sir. We wrote it in as a contingency. I will admit, there are things that we write in that we don't know what's going to happen, and this is a protection for things we can't predict. So that's pretty much it.
Okay, all right, and then, and, and this seems like the most fair thing that's ever been brought before council because if you've owned a business in this town for fifty years and it gets taken from you by eminent domain, you should be able to build back without having to pay exorbitant back fees.
Sure. So what, what I'd also say is, of course, all of these are, are reviewed, and there's always a level of review, staff review. And there is an appeal process in place as well. So if, if we get down to those details and, you know, there's a discrepancy of some sort, then, then those will be reviewed, and ultimately it would come to council for the decision on whether it's fair or not fair.
Okay, and the final question I have that came up at committee, I believe, is if they are in a donut hole, if, and get eminent domain, they do not receive the credit, correct?
That is how it is written, and for, for this reason, it is very difficult to write an exemption for, for that limited purpose.
No, I understand. I think it should be written.
All right, all in favor of the motion?
I do have one question. I apologize. Just on the eminent domain, just when that happens, do attorneys seek that, that dam, in their damages to South Carolina? Do, do they seek the, where am I at here? The impact fee?
I would say attorneys seek whatever they can.
You know, that was a dumb question. I take that question back.
What I would tell you is that under current South Carolina law, it's not a compensable item.
Oh, it's not, okay.
I take that position, and I believe that is exactly what is true in the state. I would also say that certain business owners are eligible for relocation fees, though those are capped. And it's questionable as to whether any sum or all of impact fees could be covered by relocation.
Thank you. Good work, brother.
One additional question down here.
Yes.
Don't mind. The businesses that are being relocated as part of the five-twenty-six interchange, I believe maybe one of spoke here tonight, are those within the town limits?
I'm not aware of whether they are or not, but that is certainly, I, I think, a paramount issue for them and for the town to consider.
Okay, I'm just trying to determine if, does this actually solve the, the problem that Citizen brought to us?
In full disclosure, I, I have not reviewed that specific issue. Of course, we didn't write it for one, one business or one, one applicant or one person. I, I understand that it may not be, or parts of it may not be. And so that needs to be considered as to whether this would help them. I, I just don't know at this point. I can't commit to an answer. But I, I have some opinion that I may have heard that they may not.
I'm not sure, and I'm not sure there's any way to, to get around that. But I did want to at least raise that issue.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
First reading ordinance number two, five, zero, two, nine.
Item B is old business. There are no planning, old business items. I conferred with the mayor pro tem. We have been in session since four-thirty. We think a five-minute break is in order, and then we will come right back and, and get into the rest of the agenda, please.
Yes, ma'am, of course. Really, the recommendation that comes here is what came out of the original planning commission recommendation, and then what was adopted with the new code. The only thing that's different is there was, it was recommended that there be one town council member on the commission. The recommendation was made last week at committee that there not be a town council member, and instead there be a local business community member. Other than that, the one, at least one green commission member, one planning commission member, and then, of course, experts or certified arborists, and that was really kind of the direction. I know, I know y'all talked about the number, typically our boards and commissions, there's seven to nine members. Length, you know, six, nine, six months to a year, a month, you know. So there was some discussion on that, but the vote was really around who should be represented on, on this committee.
Would, would those be requirements or would those be preferences? Because if we don't get applications, do we not go forward with the committee until we can impanel the whole thing?
Well, that was, that was the, one of the fundamental questions that we had at committee was that a lot of the people sort of highlighted in the, of, of experts sort of in the different industries or certified arborists are professionals who are typically paying for their services. And so to obtain people or to get applications from people who are willing to do this as a volunteer sort of task force may be difficult. But I think the concern was about balance on the committee because there was concern that the committee needed to be a mix of, you know, sort of.
Tree huggers.
Yeah, sure. So the mix of like tree huggers versus the people, you know, versus developers. Not, not like true, you know what I mean? So, so I think that that's, that there was, there was, needed to be some balance on the committee so that the, that the answer would not be, that the answers would be some sort of compromise that, that protected our tree canopy. So I, I think, I think seven to nine members, one year, give them a, give them a goal of, of like what their outcome should be, as which, which, what I would think would be an amendment to the, the tree ordinance, right? And then, but I do think, I do think we need this balance on the, on the committee. And if we, and if we get to the point where we can't get that, I think we have to address that when, when it comes up.
Ms. Paclareen, can I ask you a, I guess procedural question? This would be a task force, not a standing commission or anything. The task force, as I recall, we had an affordable housing task force. We had a settlement community task force, and we had a Shem Creek task force. But I can remember Ms. Santos, she might remember more. I remember Shem Creek was when I first came on council. They all had a limited time, and they all delivered a report to council, as I recall.
Yes, sir.
So this is only by a resolution? This is not an ordinance creating this or?
Correct, sir. It would not be an ordinance to create a standing commission. It would be done by resolution. And the key components, as our, our planning director indicated, we need to know number. We need to know preferences or mandatory requirements, and we need to know the term. And, and the mission, of course, and any requirements such as a report. And, and obviously council can provide further direction as time passes.
Okay. May I ask, Mr. Tinky, since you have done a lot of work on this, and I think you emailed to all council members, the mission, vision, and purpose?
I, I think it's important because there's been a number of these efforts in the past, and we want to learn from what worked and what didn't work, and there were good things that happened in some and, and not so good things that happened in others. And so what I tried to do is look at tree ordinances all, all around or the community forest master plan and ideas that have been done in other towns. And I think if we're going to advertise for this position, it's important they know what they're signing up for. And so in order to do that, it would be good to have a draft of at least a mission statement. That could be amended once the group comes together. But what I had put in front of the group was to enhance the environment, environmental, economic, and social benefits the Mount Pleasant Community Forest through strategic planning, community engagement, and sustainable management practices, ensuring resilience to coastal challenges and climate change to protect, preserve, and enhance the tree canopy. And there are three really basic things just to be thinking about. The, the tree protection, preservation, and restoration ordinance, the administrative, administrative role in the protection, preservation, and restoration of trees, and the implementation of the community forest master plan, which is already being part of the community, the comprehensive, new comprehensive plan, which I think is great. Because that community forest master plan that was commissioned by the town and put in place in twenty-four. and put in place in twenty-four is excellent. It's absolutely excellent. So, it provides a step-by-step approach for this commission without having to really work too hard. It talks, talks about things like establishing an inventory of our trees. But some very specific things here I think is important. I do think the seven to nine members are important. I think the nine seems to work well, but I'm not stuck on one or another. But I think the nine seems to work well and could give a balance. And the only reason I put down the different categories was not that they had to, there had to be one in that category, but it just gave people an idea of what we're looking for. So, when we said town of Mount Pleasant representatives, well, that's why it is good to have a planning commission member, a green commission member, or an urban forestry if we're going to be doing that, or urban forestry and environmental experts, community members and stakeholders, academic and research partners, and consultants and advisors. They may all, we may not get them from any of those, but at least they know that it's, we're open to listen to a wide range of people that can do things for us. I do think it's important that, that goes, the committee that it goes to is important, because we have a flood resilience committee. And so, I think the fact that this would report up through the flood resilience committee is the appropriate place, because trees and stormwater work very closely together. And so, I think that resilience piece is important. I also think it's important that the, the department that it falls under is the executive department, because trees fall under all different, different departments. You know, they're in public works, they're in planting, they're in engineering, they're in BOZA, et cetera. So, if it's under, the, the coordination of this effort is important, because then the executive branch can, can handle that under Christian and, and the staff. So, I think that's a really good, a good approach. So, those are some of the thought processes that I had. And if, if, if the group would like me to put into a motion, I can, or we can continue to discuss.
Sure.
Is this a, is this a commission that is sunsetting, or is this a commission? Is there, I see it's a tree task force, is this, it sunsets then when it's a task force? Okay, thank you.
Yes, a one-year term.
And there's this role then into, like, I mean, I, I'm down with the tree task force. Just, does it roll into, and, and into the green commission then at that point? Because I, I feel that the green commission was.
I don't think so. If you look at other towns, they roll into a public-private partnership many times. And you hope to get the private industry in it, and they would form a group that would work with the public to make these things work for long term.
Thank you. I just have one more question or comment is, I think, you know, all residents are definitely affected by trees, and I, I would definitely got to make sure that all residents have the opportunity beyond this commission. Hopefully, we'll get as many people coming out. So, are you saying, so those will be suggestions, or, or there will be a seat for each one of those, and then the other ones will be at large?
I was just suggesting that the, the list that I gave had five different areas. And they would involve the, but the green commission member, a planning commission member, a local business community member, experts and arborists, those are clearly important ones. And, but you could end up having someone from academic or research partners. After all, this study was done by the South Carolina Forestry Commission. So, I would see if they would be interested in having someone and a presentation from them about what is the Community Forest Master Plan would be important. I also think it's urban forestry and environmental experts, I mean, that's what they do. And so, if there, there may be some that do that, just like we have engineers and lawyers and all our different things. Yes, they make a living doing it, but there's some that are maybe retired that would like to be involved in this, and this would be a legacy work for them. So, I think it's important to put these things out there, because we'd like to get it. And, you know, it wouldn't, if somebody came to us from academia and said, I'm in habitat restoration, or I'm a biologist, it wouldn't bother me either, because we'd have, we're looking at a community forest master plan and everything that has to do with it. But no, it would not be a requirement. It would, you just try to get who you, you.
I don't think I've heard anybody say that these ought to be required.
I mean, we have sometimes a difficult time.
Right.
When you get so specific.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Brownstein?
Yes, I appreciate it. I, I think that, that some of the folks that Mr. Tinky is outlining would be great members. I do note on the, on the slide, it says it should include at least one of these folks. So, it seems like those are, would be required based on, on what we're discussing. I do think that we're missing a key member from that list, and that's the Board of Zoning Appeals, which frequently hears the cases involving trees and how those intersect with our town regulations and laws. And, and I think a BOZA member could, could produce excellent guidance for this task force.
If, if we make these requirements, this says should, if, if people on the green commission say, I'm already volunteering my time, I've already got one meeting a month, and people on the planning commission, then what do we do? Then, then it's, then it's stuck, then it doesn't move forward.
Plus, I, plus I think BOZAs, their decision, what slippery slope is that, putting somebody from BOZA on another, considering they're making decisions?
Right.
They're.
They're quasi-legal.
Yeah, correct. They're quasi-legal, and then they're making the decision on the commission, and then coming to a BOZA, and then voting on that decision.
I, I think that I don't have really legal or ethical concern with that, as, as the proposed task force is talking about policy. I don't think specific, specific instances, although I guess they could raise those as examples, but I'm still not concerned about any conflicts.
I'd like to be the first to say that the mayor, I, I agree that this should be more at large than anything.
Thank you. Wonderful. Mr. Tinky, or I'm not, well, this is planning committee, I'm sorry, I was thinking this is from your thing. Could, could we make these, that we encourage that representation? I'm just, I, you know, we need to get it going. And, and then if one of those has to drop off, you know, six months into it, then, then we're not compliant, so.
So, perhaps a motion to direct staff to draft a, like a, a vision statement and kind of parameters for, say, seven members, do you think, or nine? Do you think seven or nine? For seven, for seven members of a, of a tree task force with recommended, you know, encouraged to include and have the green commission, planning commission, BOZA, business community members, and experts. And, and then we can review that at planning committee. And then we can move forward at the next council meeting.
Okay, make that a motion.
All right.
Let's take a step here.
Move to direct staff to, to draft a, a, I guess, like a vision statement and kind of parameters for the task force.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. And that would include like the number of members?
Yes.
The preferences, the requirements, and the term?
Exactly.
Okay, and bring that back to.
One-year term, seven members, and a list of the green commission, planning commission, local business community member, expert, certified arborist, and BOZA.
Is that part of your?
Yes.
Okay, and is your second include what?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're in discussion. Consider adding to that, that, that this would report up through flood resilience, and the oversight would be through the executive office. And, and those would be the two things that I would add to it.
Are you off, are you moving to amend?
Moving to amend.
All right.
To add those, those items.
And we have a second. Okay. Say that again?
That the, the commit, the committee of council would be flood resilience.
Okay.
For this, that the administration would be through the executive office.
Okay. As opposed to planning department or, or EDS or something?
Right.
All right, so that's the motion. And we have a second. Any further discussion on the amendment? Yes, sir?
I do have a question on the amendment. So, the tree rules are under the planning code. So, any changes to those by law requires planning commission and planning committee, right?
Yes, sir.
So, that can't be bypassed, even though there's a flood resilience committee.
Right. But I mean, the commission, the report.
Just a discussion.
Never mind.
Right. Okay, good question, though. Yeah, yes, sir.
Is this all, is this Mount Pleasant resident requirement then? Is that, okay, so it must be a Mount Pleasant resident. All right, thank you.
All right. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, we have one, so motion carries. All right, so we are back in discussion on the primary motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Good step. Next, discussion of possible action regarding heights of detached accessory structures. This came from planning committee as well?
This height, right? I know we've just passed the zoning code, but this is one piece of it that I never was really completely comfortable with. I feel like we should have broader protection for some of our older neighborhoods, and we do have an overlay for our legacy neighborhoods. So, what's the, what is the official title for that overlay?
It's now called the Neighborhood Preservation Overlay District.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood Preservation Overlay.
Overlay District.
And it.
Include some older neighborhoods, so.
Correct.
I feel that we should have some conversation about these accessory structures that are taking over in these areas, and what protections, just for these, at least for these communities, if not townwide, for accessory structures. Because one thing that we did vote for was to increase heights. And I know that our thought was, if we let them go up, then they won't go out, and we'll have less impervious surface. But then you have, you know, unintended consequences for that, because then you have people getting around, getting an ADU permit, building these, and then maybe retrofitting it after the fact. So, just before, I thought, before this goes on too long, that we have any unintended consequences, I wanted to make sure that we were all in line with what we actually are implementing, and if we should be at least extending whatever we do for the historic district into the, the overlay for the, for our older communities. So.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess. When, when we were discussing this, putting together the whole planning code, it was my thought, and I think Mr. Rambo's thought, at least you said that at the committee meeting, that the butted no case can be taller than the principal building should be for every one of the four lines. It should not ever be taller than the principal building.
Right.
And the only time we thought that was okay was if you had it over the garage, in, in which case, that's a little different. So, I, I, I would like to suggest that we include the butted no case can be taller than principal building for all four of these line items.
Okay, so we have a suggestion. Do we have a? Do we have a second suggestion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you.
I'm not crazy about making these, these changes on the fly without going through planning committee or planning commission. And so, I just wonder, and, and I'm sympathetic, I've, I've met with Mr. Barnes, and I've, I've driven through his neighborhood, and I am disturbed by the scale of some of the, the buildings that are being built. I wonder, though, if putting in no case taller than the principal building, does that encourage people to tear down the existing building and, and build a twenty-five-foot house in its place? And I also wonder if some of this could be addressed by setbacks from the property line. And so, I'm very hesitant to make this change on the fly. I think that we need to, to be deliberate about it, and there, there may be a better solution to the issue than just, you know, making a declaration from this desk. And so, I, you know, I, I, I am concerned. I, I hear that forty percent of the lot is the max coverage, but, I mean, just, just eyeballing it, even forty percent, if those are in fact forty percent, it's jarring, especially when you have a, a neighborhood that's filled with ranch-style homes. One of those just looks totally out of place, in my opinion. And I'm not sure what, what the, the solution is to it. You know, there's some pretty powerful desires for people to build bigger and bigger homes, which I personally don't really get. I want a smaller and smaller home. But I just want to make sure that we're not making a decision from up here that's going to really cause unintended consequences. And so, I, I would really prefer that we maybe look at a suite of different options and flow it up through a committee, rather than have a vote here today. Because I do think there are some things that you could do by moving them off the, the, or further away from the property lines, and maybe looking at that forty percent threshold and see, does that really make sense? In a place like the Indian Village, maybe it needs to be a little bit smaller in those areas. And so, not against, not against making changes to, to this, but just, I want to make sure that we're careful about it and we get it right.
I, I would like to add, you know, if, if you're familiar with, for instance, our, our neighboring municipality Sullivan's Island over the years, about fifteen, twenty years ago, maybe fifteen, when they put a moratorium on teardowns, because what was, when I moved to Mount Pleasant in nineteen sixty-six, what was a brand-new ranch in old Mount Pleasant is now older than I am. And that's, you know, a good bit past half a century. And so, you know, what gets torn down today would be a historic building, or maybe already is. And I, I don't, I know we're, we're not about to vote on a moratorium on that, but this, this teardown and, and rebuild, and what if that had happened in the old village? What if that had happened in South abroad in Charleston? What if that had happened in Multriville on Sullivan's Island? We wouldn't have some historic homes there, and I think it's worth, don't want, don't want people panicking, you know, oh, no, they're saying no more teardowns. But in that, in that list of things we're looking at, Mr. Chapman, however, if we amend, or, or, or just do this differently, this motion differently, let's look at all, let's look at all of that, because we're losing the character of our older neighborhoods.
I'm happy to revise this for our planning department to look at options.
Okay.
And bring it back to the planning committee.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you very much. I think, does that cover your concerns?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Any others, sir?
Yeah, I agree as well. My, my mom still lives in the same house where I was born, raised in. And, and the neighborhood still has those same styled houses and that height, and I would hate to see people coming in and all of a sudden changing, you know, what the neighborhood, you know, looks like. So, I, I agree.
All right.
Yes, sir. One thing to talk about while, while doing this, since you guys got to be discussing this, is I think the houses have a ten-foot setback, but an ADU is a six-foot setback. Is that correct?
So, yeah, typically, in our residential zoning districts, R1, R2, you have a, a ten-foot side, and it's usually a combined twenty-five. So, it could be a ten and a fifteen, it could be a twelve and a half and a twelve and a half. But for any detached accessory structure, we've had a six-foot setback for as long as I can remember.
It's kind of, right, kind of strange. I mean, not, not calling somebody out, I'm just saying, like, six feet for an ADU, but then ten feet for the house. So, I think something, if you guys can really look at that. And I was surprised, I saw, I saw a house, and I was like, that thing's like eighty percent coverage, but we pulled it up, and it's like thirty-seven percent coverage. I couldn't, I couldn't believe it. But.
All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Tinky.
I think it's good, it's called a neighborhood preservation setback. So, I think it's important to look at those, as, you know, I was a no vote on going from twenty to twenty-five in the old village, and likewise, in old Mount Pleasant, similarly, I felt the same way. Because you need to take into account the unique character of different neighborhoods, and try to maintain some of that, and maintain the diversity that you have in those areas. And so, I, I think it's really important to go back and, and, and look at these, and just see exactly how they, how they fit. So, I totally support it with that.
All right. Any others? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right.
I believe the clerk has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Two motions on the floor, sir, so which was that vote for?
That, that was for, he amended his own motion in the second. And, and that included to have staff look at these, and then they just come back through the committee. Yes.
So, from this, it's going to come back to committee, then it would, if we make any decisions, it would go to commission?
That would be my understanding.
And then, back to committee?
Committee, then council.
Correct, it would have.
Correct. It would have to follow the normal course for amending our zoning code.
Right.
All right. Motion carries. Section eleven, council new business, A1, adoption of a resolution to, uh, to adopt the capital improvement plan for the town of Mount Pleasant for fiscal years twenty-six through thirty.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Resolution twenty-five zero five one.
Number two is a resolution by the town in Mount Pleasant making a declaration of intent to enter lease purchase.
Move to approve items two and three. Second.
Two and three on the next page is a resolution to adopt the five-year general fund financial plan fiscal year twenty-six through thirty. All right. The motion is to approve both. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Resolutions twenty-five zero five-two and twenty-five zero five-three.
Item four is, uh, renewing a, uh, mutual aid agreement, law, law enforcement between Mount Pleasant and the city of North Charleston.
Motion to approve.
Second.
To approve. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Resolution.
B, final reading and ordinance to adopt and appropriate a budget for the town of Mount Pleasant for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, beginning on July.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Question.
We have a second. Yes.
Question. We, we deleted out of the, because of the Edwards Park, um, uh, pullback of the five million, we deleted the inventory of historic district, uh, of the eighty thousand dollars. That was a good move. I, I agreed with that. Um, I, I would just suggest, and this isn't for a vote, but just if we were able to get the funding, or let's look at that because that fits right in with the conversation we had before of what are historic homes? And the last time we did was fifteen years ago. So there are ranches and different groups that would be fit into the historic area in the future.
All right, so, yes, we need a, we need an amendment now that, now that we have a motion on the floor to approve. That's a primary motion, and this would be an amendment to incorporate the recommendations from the budget committee, Mr. Rambo.
Oh, no, I, I was just asking. A recommendation.
Yes.
Or an amendment.
Yes.
Um, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to amend as recommended by budget committee.
Okay. So the motion is to amend as recommended by budget committee. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What?
I mo- I voted against the amendment.
Okay, but motion still carries?
Correct.
Okay. Now the primary motion is, uh, to enact the budget, which is, has been amended, um, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Budget is adopted. Item twelve, if there is no further business before this council, we stand adjourned.